Well, seven P M on February second, twenty twenty-two, and this is the town of New Windsor Town Council meeting. If you will please stand and join in a further reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I will remind everyone that the town meetings are recorded by electronic means and that the meeting will follow an agenda. Anyone who wish to have a matter placed on the agenda, they need to submit the topic to the mayor in writing by the last Wednesday of the month. Close of business is three P M and those items will be reviewed for approval. Has anyone had a chance to go over the minutes from January fifth, twenty twenty-two, of the town council meeting? Yes, yes, any changes, questions, concerns? Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the town council meeting for January.
I'll second.
Oh, there's a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have it five zero.
The mayor would have said we don't have any sound.
We got a little bit of a problem.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't need that. Um, C N C is handling the sound today. I just reached out.
Thank you.
I think I didn't see them.
You can.
Are you trying to mute?
Yeah, you shouldn't have it on.
It should be going through here, right, so I.
It should. I'm just waiting for them to respond.
Oh, oh, Pierre, is that number six?
Eight.
Eight?
No, six, you're right.
What do you say?
That's what they're controlling from their, their side.
He said we're fine on one here.
All right, looking forward.
No, they just removed it.
You're gonna go ahead and swear in the ethics commission members? I have it here. Who would like to, ladies first? Please stand as well. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nancy Bones.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of ethics commission member for the town of New Windsor.
Execute the office of ethics commission member of the town of New Windsor.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Thank you, welcome board. Would you please rise, Mr. Paulsberg? Raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Edum Paulsberg.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of ethics commission member for the town of New Windsor.
Execute the office of ethics commission member for the town of New Windsor.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Welcome board, thank you. You are. Okay, where are we going?
Make myself a note to resent that part. With attachments.
Guess we can just grab Rebecca whenever she comes in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good move forward? Okay, I have one item to support and that is work involving myself, members of the council, our delegations, our commissioners, and our senator. The governor has put New Windsor's wastewater treatment plant E and R upgrade into his capital budget. We'll know more on this by late March. The total sum ended up being three million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars. So that's a, that's a good step forward for New Windsor when it comes to that project.
We can talk about that more later, but I know that there's a, an obligation on the town's part, right, Gary?
Hell, yeah.
It's a pretty significant one for us. In order for us to even get that money, we have to come up with.
Yes, there's, there's funding from M D E for all the small wastewater treatment plants. Um, it's a percentage, it varies depending on what improvements are being done, formula driven. Um, and then this is a proposed amount of money in the governor's budget. And then in addition to, um, the construction cost, then you also, again, we, we factor in total cost as construction management and inspection. So yes, there's still a significant portion, even with the M D E funding and if the governor's money gets.
Thank you.
Hi Rebecca, nice to see you, meet you, Ms. Bryce. You can just remain standing, just raise your right hand, grab the little paper there and just repeat after, repeat after me, okay?
I thought this was last.
We're not, we're not, we're not, it's not your fault.
I'll have all my answer green, nice to meet you. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rebecca Price.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice.
Diligently and faithfully without partiality, partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of ethics commission member for the town of New Windsor.
Execute the office of ethics commission member for the town of New Windsor.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn.
Yep.
So just real quick, um, I haven't heard back from C N C, but people still can't hear, so I, I would recommend that we just use our own microphones like we used to, until they reply.
I don't know, how, how we turn these off then?
It would just be you'd hit the unmute on, on your, on your, uh.
No, use the, use, just remove your mouse and use that thing here. Don't touch the, don't touch the little thing up here.
Yeah, just the unmute.
The unmute button.
Okay.
It's that way.
Moving forward to the council committees. We have community enhancement with Councilwoman Gribben Lindeman.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted, am I right? I guess, okay.
Yep.
All right, good evening, and I, I'll start with, um, the reeds. We had a little bit of a discussion about the reeds last time, whether we needed more or not. And since then, I have met with, um, um, Wayne and talked to him about the number of reeds we have. We have plenty of reeds. The issue is more that if we want to put more roads up in town to kind of fill out the roads, uh, like, um, High Street, put maybe four more reeds down there on those poles, then we need to add electricity to those poles, which can be kind of expensive. So that's our issue. We need to know if that's something we want to pursue, um, on each end of town, adding some more reeds up that way by just putting electricity on the poles. And if so, then we could, you know, go ahead and get a quote on that and see what that would cost and, and vote on that. I mean, if you wanted to, to go that route. Other than that, we have enough reeds, we have more than enough reeds, we just don't have, you know, the facility to put them up with, with light. So is that something that we want to, um, keep going, following through on, or?
Is the, the, the power that's already up through there, is that already overhead? I mean, is it lines that are running conveniently through there, or, or what's the deal up there?
Probably not tapped into a bolt.
No?
I would watch.
Yeah, I would defer to, to, uh, Director Myers on that. I, I don't know.
Is he here, Director Myers?
I think she, he dropped off.
I think he was. Well, I know in talking to him, um, some of the poles, I guess, have been replaced at different times. For instance, there's a pole, uh, on Main Street that was replaced when, because a house was torn down there, and I guess the pole had to be replaced because of that. So for years, we didn't have, uh, reed on that pole, and this year they came and put electricity on that one. I also think they put electricity on, um, like some poles right here, right at the corner, I think, of Uncle Matty's. They got lights back on those reeds, so they did do a couple of poles this year. But, you know, like the reeds kind of stop, um, fairly quickly as you're going down, uh, High Street. And if we wanted to go all the way down to, like, say where the liquor store was, we'd have to add four more, uh, poles on there.
Is it four?
Yeah, four, well, three or four. I mean, I, I would go four, but if we can only do three, that'd be fine. And then on the other end of town, if we had them to go a little bit closer to the Seven Eleven, that would be like another three poles there. So, you know, we, we could find out what the price would be. Um, would you like me to pursue that?
I would, I would like to pursue getting a quote on how much it would cost to, to, uh, have electric put on the poles on either end of town.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's find out how much it costs and maybe it's something we have to build into next year's budget depending, but, or think about doing that, but it's hard to make a decision when we don't know how much, so.
Right, okay.
Could I ask a quick question on that? I might have misheard. Are we talking installation of poles and electric, or adding electric to existing?
Adding electric to existing poles. Okay, um, the next thing that I really want to talk about is I've given, I put out on, um, I put, uh, the quote for the display sale, fun display sales for the hometown hero banners, online for everybody to see, and I've handed them out tonight too, in case you needed a copy. And, um, I spent a lot for, a quote for twenty-five banners. And, uh, I went with, I went, I called Mount Airy and asked them how they did their banners, because their banners look really good. And they have a print shop in town and people came in and had pictures taken right there and they, you know, they, they had kind of a sweet deal going. But those, you know, so she couldn't tell me the actual company that they dealt with, because the print shop is the one that had them made. But I'm calling around, I really like this company Display Sales, because I felt like the quality of their banners was so incredible. Um, I think I showed you one of their swatches at one point, and, and since then, I found out that it's two, um, well, it's two pieces of fabric that are sewn together. And, and what I found out was that there's a line around between there too, so it's actually like three thicknesses. And double stitched on the sides, and Wayne was asking me about the grommets on there, were they steel, were they, uh, something else? And they're the better one, but he wanted, so, um, I'm not quite sure what the metal was, but it was the better metal. And I just felt like they were, they were good quality. So the total, and he felt like we should have, we should go ahead and get, um, all the hardware for putting them up, because some of the hardware is missing and broken from the ones that we have now. And, um, he said that if we had all the matching hardware for these, then he would use the hardware that we have left over from the ones that are up now as backup for, uh, when these go, when these go. So the whole thing with the banners and the hardware would be three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. And so we need to, you know, vote on whether we want to go forward with that, or if you're happy with that.
Is this something that is already, um, has a place in the budget for, for, I guess, the twenty twenty-one budget?
Well, I, um, I felt like I had more money than I did, I guess, in the last, uh, budget. I was thinking I had twenty-five thousand to go with and realized that that was not all mine and that it was a little bit less than that, but so far, I have spent, um, just about eighteen thousand on the reeds. And so this would be in addition to that. It's just unfortunate that the amount our mom spends money is, uh, I, I, you know, it's, uh, and prices are going up on everything. But this quote includes shipping and everything.
Donna, is that a question you can answer at all, whether or not there's money left in that, in that line?
Uh, yeah, you do.
So the budget that Councilwoman Gribben Lindeman is referring to is a comprehensive total budget for this fiscal year of twenty thousand dollars. And that includes other things beside the reeds. So that budget has already been extended for the year. That line, I think. We're actually over.
How many are off of the ones that we do have? I mean, are they, can we not get by for another season? I mean, how often we normally put them up, leave them up, or just a few months?
Um, well, I'm not sure how often they normally leave them up or I don't, um, you know, I'm kind of a little bit new on this too, so I think that they take them down in time for the reeds each year, I know that, and I'm not sure exactly how long they've had them for. Some of them are damaged, they won't be put back up, and then we have three new people that, uh, two or three new people that want banners as well. And some of them are damaged, so that was, in talking with Wayne, he felt that it would be worthwhile to just redo all of them and get new hardware for all of them, so that they'd be good quality, starting from scratch. And so that's where I got the quote for.
Wait, Dr. Myers, can, can you weigh in on when we put them up? As, if I remember correctly, I know it was around Veterans Day and I think maybe Memorial Day?
Yeah, it's two times a year.
And you might have to put the speaker on so you can hear.
He's got himself. Looks like he's muted, I can't hear.
Can you mute yourself? Maybe not.
Okay, Wendy. I can't hear him.
He's muted.
He's still muted, he needs to unmute himself. Wayne? You cannot mute yourself, Wayne. Are you there, Wayne?
All right, any other questions?
Well, it looks like we might not get that answer tonight, but, um, you know, we can, we can find that out. But maybe Sharon, if you, if, unless, you know, you can meet with the staff and find out if there's some other place we can get the money from. It might be something that we have to put off until the next budget year.
Okay.
Because we can't make, we can't really vote on it if we don't know where the money's coming from.
Mm-hmm.
So. And it would be good to have that information from him too, about when we put them up.
All right, and the other thing that I need to talk about is, um, when the music on the main, I guess I need to know for sure that's something that we're going to go forward with and, um, make a few decisions about that, because I know how time goes just flying by and, um, it's, I need to know if, first of all, if we're definitely still doing that.
C N C, why not?
Okay, and are you happy with those four bands, or did you want to?
They've been on for several, uh, several years in a row now, correct? I know a few of them have, maybe, maybe try to see what we can't, you know, change it up a little bit, freshen it up, if you will.
Mm-hmm. So if you have any ideas about what band you?
You're on mute, yeah.
I, I think, I think people can hear, uh, right now, I think they've.
Are they okay, they can hear?
I'm pretty sure, I'm just going to double check with some people.
Okay, so, I mean, I have one band that I could contact, um, but other than, if you have other bands that you know of and you are interested in.
Those bands generally have a, uh, you know, something on YouTube or, or just a sample of what, maybe just get them together, have a little sample for us and we can go from there. And, you know, if everyone's in agreement with, you know, the genre and, you know, the, obviously the pricing, then there'd be a, 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 we should freshen the, the entertainment up a little bit.
Okay, well, I would also say, might want to think about the price of each new band too, because you don't know what the prices are going to be like and that kind of thing.
I'm going to hurt to reach out and, and feel around.
Now Sharon, um, are you, are you going to start up the, uh, monthly meetings as well?
Well, I think we could probably wait a little while before we did that. I mean, um, but I just wanted to get a few big things out. I mean, I could use help on the band thing, if anybody else wants to help me with that, that would be great.
Well, because, because one, one of the things I know we talked about last year was the tents and moon bounce. Um, especially the tents, we were finding out that you can actually buy tents for about the same price as it costs to rent for one, one year. Now, you take some planning, so I think, you know, months ahead, like we are now, might be the good time to start looking to see if there is any, um, tents out there that are the right size, maybe in a decent shape, because you get them used for eight hundred bucks, where that's what we paid for, for them, and we'll have them for, you know, year after year.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
To start the monthly meeting?
To go ahead and approach, look for some used tents and things. And we can start the monthly meetings if you want.
I mean, I, I, as long as everybody's fine with that, I can start looking, you know, and then I'll, I'll shoot you an email if I find any and then.
That's great. I think that's great.
I mean, do you guys? We could probably put something on, um, um, Facebook to see if any people want to suggest bands, not necessarily that, but, but the only thing, the only input I have on that, and I don't disagree with the mayor, that it wouldn't be a good idea to mix some of it up. People do like this on, this grouping, so we might want to maybe change one or two, but not change them all. And the other thing is, I really think it's important to have at least one local musician represented in the four. Because it's, and I know Chris Morning Sky has been in it for several years, and I think they're great, there are other local music acts. So, you know, just, just to keep that into the mix, I think is important.
I agree totally.
Yeah.
Um, so do you guys want to go ahead and start having a monthly meeting on this, or?
Even if it was just bi-monthly, we could see how, see what we get done.
Bi-monthly?
It'll be there before.
So, so we want to do maybe the first meeting in March? Okay, so, um, I don't have a calendar with me, but, um, what did we have them on last year, Mondays or Thursdays?
I suppose Tuesdays.
A Tuesday?
Tuesday night, Saturday. First, first Tuesday.
First Tuesday? Okay, so let's say first Tuesday in March then.
Then I might get, I mean, it might get an opportunity to get some more community members in there.
The first Tuesday is, is a, is the fir-, is the fir-, rather.
No, not the Wednesday.
That, that would be the first, so maybe we should do it the second Tuesday, because then we would, we would, the rest of us would have two meetings in a row.
Okay.
Like the eighth, maybe, which is the second Tuesday in March.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. March eighth, all right.
Anybody here out there that wants to join us, please do. Is that, what do we do, six thirty, is that what we did?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, six thirty.
All right, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, um, on the hometown hero banners. We're going to shuffle that until next year, is that the idea?
I would, I would see if you could get it added to the budget.
Yeah, unless, you know.
The budget that we're working on.
I mean, that wouldn't be until, that wouldn't start until July first, so the only other option is to, to meet with the staff and see if there's any other pot of money that, that we're not spending, that we could talk about moving it from.
Okay.
But it's, you know, we just can't really vote when we don't know how it's being paid for.
Right, gotcha, okay. All right, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you Sharon.
Sure.
Moving on to Public Works with Councilwoman Paulson.
Hello, my name, uh, Public Works Co., has been busy planting and supplying snow, saltine, and marking utilities for a potential stormwater project in the lower Main Street area. Public Works has spread about fifty tons of salt so far this year. Uh, Public Works Director Myers has just ordered, uh, forty additional tons to replenish, replenish the stock. Public Works is also clapping on with town manager Di on the budget, now marking on costs for future projects, including a new retainment wall for the dumpsters and a new salt barn both at the Gear Lane facility. The planning commission did meet in January, we approved the county update information for the two thousand twenty-one annual report. Our new state regional planner, Avia Klue, was unable to attend, however, we proceeded to discuss the comprehensive plan. We will be discussing and revising chapters six and seven at the February meeting.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to water and sewer with Councilman Paul.
All right, so as water sewer, uh, enters the new budget season, um, Wayne's first priority is to budget projects to get the most out of them, um, without breaking the bank, so there's tons of projects lined up. Um, right now, it's a matter of what, what can we, what small things can we fix to, um, you know, help us, uh, in the future, stop things from breaking down, um, without, without obviously going over budget. Um, so some of the things that they're looking at is looking at, um, new sources of water and also increasing the output of existing sources. Um, and then, like I said before, we have a, we have a large backlog of, of issues. Um, so we're, we're working those, we're trying to get, um, obviously working with the, the budget to, to make some of those projects happen in this next, uh, budget cycle. That's about it.
Sir. Moving on to public safety with Councilman Kortik.
Good evening, everyone. Do I have to unmute?
No.
We're good. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I don't have much of a report, but I do, um, I did hear from the, uh, the fire company, and they wanted to have input on the streetscape project. Um, they have some significant concerns about the design. No issues, that's, so to speak, but they want to make sure that they have representation when we, uh, uh, go through the design phase of it. Um, if we're going to have a, um, committee, a, an advisory or, or steering committee for the design, they want to be a, a part of that. So, um, that makes sense to me, and like I said, they do have significance concerns with width of the streets and speed bumps, which obviously we, we haven't decided that, but, um, that was just a concern of theirs, and, and like I said, it makes sense when you have, um, emergency vehicles that they'll, they'll be utilizing, so, um, just that, and then I'm going to defer to, uh, uh, Deputy Kalusi's report.
Thank you, sir.
Concerns, ma'am.
Moving on to economic development with Councilwoman Schultz.
Okay, I wanted to just give an update on the small business passport. Uh, I learned that too, um, for the, just a quick refresher, um, for Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. The, um, Carroll County Economic Development Group has a program that includes literally hundreds of small businesses around Carroll County. And if you take the passport to, I think, eight businesses and get it stamped, your, your passport can be entered into a drawing, and they have ten fifty-dollar gift certificates that can be used at any of those businesses in any of the towns in the, in the county that participate. So I found out that two of the gift certificates were used locally in New Windsor. And this is a, a win-win, because it brings people into town to patronize a local business. Doesn't cost the business anything, because the Economic Development Committee has a pot that they reimburse the business for the gift certificate. And in most cases, people spend more at the business. and in most cases, people spend more at the business than the fifty dollars that they want, so. I was really, I mean, I've never, not that they've never been using New Windsor before, but I've never got heard back from a business telling me that they had, so I was happy about that, and they're gonna expand the program to last several weeks next year, so I think that will be great. Um the new calendar for this um the county's small business resources events are um is up on um the Carroll County Economic Development website, and I'm, I have all this information in my report and I also post it on Facebook. And I just wanted to remind anybody that's listening in that that the county has a really good um small business center that does free consulting on starting your own business, on growing it, and also has um help with loans and business plans, so. Um if anybody needs that information, you can contact me, but you can just go to Carroll County Economic Development and find it. That's all I have.
Is it in? Moving on to ten ninety of Gary Dow.
Okay, from my report, a few items here, um the two oh one Main Street Park wall and lettering sketch. Um you have copy there, and Clyde Hurt with Douglas Lawn Landscape provided the sketch for the wall and lettering as requested by the council at the January eighteenth work session meeting. Um need to get closure on this and give uh from the council and get a final approval so we can get Clyde to finalize the ordering of materials and get this done. They started on the wall, the foundation uh yesterday and today, but Clyde needs direction for sure to order the specific lettering and get the, get that that worked out, so. Um if there's any comments or anything, I can get them back to him, I think Councilman Puffman mentioned one about the length of the uh second board, the lower board fountain park being uh too long, and he and and Clyde said that that'll be shortened to to the little bit beyond the width of the lettering, so that's not a concern. Um so if there are any other concerns or comments, I can get to him so he can get this going.
Do you need a vote?
Would you like a vote?
Yes, please. I mean, I I I would make a motion to adopt uh the the lettering, the um and the boards and and just how it is in in the picture. Obviously with the change that it is shortened, which we do.
And that's gonna be lighted like we talked about at the last meeting, right?
Gonna be backlit, and then there's also gonna be a a part of the original design, there's gonna be one light on the ground in front. They actually ran a conduit today to get behind it, so they'll they'll need a transformer in the back for the for the back lighting, but the front will be lit as well as the the lighting, the letters themselves.
You have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
I'd have it five zero.
All right, um. Hang on, one second. Okay, the Maryland Income Household Water Assistance Program, or LEWAP as the acronym is, this was discussed at uh the January uh council meeting, and council agreed to the town's participation in that. All registration forms uh required for participation have been completed and submitted as of Monday, uh January thirty-first. So our part's done, and then everything else runs through the local Department of Social Services, I believe it is, so that's all been taken care of. Uh the MDE USDA funding application in process for the Maryland thirty-one Water Main Project. The uh Maryland, the MDE application was submitted Friday, January twenty-first, ahead of the January thirty-first deadline, and we received confirmation, the application was was received, and MDE will contact me if they have any questions. Uh it'll probably take a couple months before we hear back at anything from them, and then Mike Reynolds started on the USDA application this week. So those, that one's just getting going. Um Water Main Break on Co. Drive, uh Public Works Director Myers discovered another line back on Co. Drive late afternoon on Friday, January twenty-eighth. Um due to the cold temperatures, the time of day, and availability of Mid-Atlantic's crew, the break was repaired Monday morning, the thirty-first by ten AM. Um there have been four breaks on this line in five years, and uh there are only two, two residents, two homes, houses served on this line. Uh so we believe this is short section of water, Water Main would be a good candidate for lining, so that's a kind of a new technology, similar to what they do for sewers, but they deal with water a little more complicated, but uh Director Myers is gonna be looking into that uh at that option and getting prices on on that. And then just the upcoming um uh twenty-three budget schedule at the twenty, February twenty-second work session, we'll be looking at the revenue expense projections, and the March second council meeting will be continuing budget discussions and general direction. That's all I have from my report.
Yep, moving on to Public Works Director Myers.
Don't think he has a report, I think everything was covered between myself, Dave and and uh and Will.
All right, well, moving on to to me, Deputy Kalusi.
You might have them mute, I mean, uh put your speaker on so you can hear.
Between the dates of January one to January thirty-first, responded the fifty-one calls for service within town limits. Out of those calls for service, only three required reports, which were the following. On January sixteenth, at approximately four oh nine AM, a deputy while on routine patrol spread a deer within the one thousand block of Green Valley Road, and here was injured due to the collision and had to be euthanized by the case was closed. On January sixteenth, at approximately three forty-seven PM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of high street regarding investigation progress. Upon arrival, it was learned that the victim was assaulted by the by the known suspect. Uh during the investigation, it was learned that the suspect had shown and threatened the victim with a knife prior to framing the scene. Deputies conducted a search of the area and were unable to locate the suspect during the profile regarding the assault, and his warrant was issued. Case remains open. On January twenty-third, at approximately three fifty-four PM, deputies responded to the five hundred block of Main Street regarding investigation progress. Investigation revealed that known parties had been to a verbal argument which turned physical. During the investigation, it was discovered that the victims currently had a valid protection order in place against the suspect. The suspect was taken into custody for the violation of the court order and transported to the detention center without incident, case was closed by arrest. All parties are presumed innocent and so per guilty quarter bond. And one last, well, two things um for other notes. Um in December of twenty twenty-one, I charged three out-of-county juveniles that were involved in an incident that occurred within town. As part of their punishment, the juveniles must complete community service within the town limits. Um I will be supervising the juveniles while the project's completed. I was thinking that the juveniles could paint the equipment at the skate park and the basketball dug, or excuse me, the baseball dugouts on Meadow Lake. Um with that, that's just my suggestion, but I'm just seeing what you guys, how you feel about that.
Deputy Kalusi, oops. I'll say. Deputy Kalusi, I think that's a good idea, but um you know, I just thought about uh how, what's the timeframe on that? Do they have a year to complete their community service?
So they have to have it completed by um the end of April, so the beginning of May. So when it warms up, we could definitely get that done. Uh the only thing would be is the town would have to provide the painting supplies and obviously the paint.
Okay, I I was thinking if they had a year, we could use some help at the Music on the Main and the Music Bounce, uh the the at Moon Bounce, so um you'll take suggestions for future ideas, but but soon, I'm I'm imagining.
We we do have the um yearly beautification, um so that that'd be a good project, we're we're gonna be, you know, planting flowers and such.
That's in April anyways, so.
So perfect timing, I don't know how many hours they need to do, but.
My grass will need to be cut by.
And that doesn't count.
All right, thank you, thank you Deputy Kalusi. Do you have any information from the West Carroll Red Council?
I do not, I do not.
Moving on to Donna Olben with the Fire Chief Report.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
The clause for the month of January, twenty-eight for fire, with come and eighty-eight for EMS. And actually, the year-to-date titles are twenty-eight and eighty. Just remember, in the event of a significant snowfall, keep the fire hydrant dug out so that we can access it for an emergency. Also, several fires in the area remind us to properly dispose ashes from your fireplace or stove. Make sure to treat them as if they are still on fire and keep them away from, and don't put them in anything combustible. Right now, our Tuesday night bingo is canceled, but keep an eye on the website for upcoming fundraisers for the new year, and when bingo, we'll start back up. And that was from Fire Chief Fire Rutter.
Thank you, moving on to your treasurer report, Ms. Olben.
So happy to report that Town Manager Di, Cam Turner Osterlander, and I have completed completed reviewing the charter portion of our post, and more on that later in the meeting. So for some budget updates, um highway user revenue has been slow coming in. So we have projected our fiscal year twenty-two thousand for fifty thousand, right now, we're only uh not quite halfway. We're about twenty-four thousand five fifty-two. Uh real property taxes so far for this fiscal year, we've received four hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is over our predicted amount, uh which was four hundred and forty thousand. And a lot of that would be contributed to the new attributed to the new homes being occupied in Snyder Summit. So the snow removal portion of the budget reflects the following. We've al- already purchased seven thousand seventy-seven dollars for salt out of an eight thousand dollar budget, and twenty-three hundred for overtime, which was budgeted for five thousand, so we're good there. And then eleven forty for other and snow removal, and most of that is um a subcontractor that's been called in to help. Snyder Summit so far has pulled a a total of forty-five permits in this fiscal year. So um they only have about forty-three units up to finish, so. So therefore, our impact fees, town building permit fees, and advent fees are well over budget on the general side. And out of our local income tax, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and so far, we've received about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we still have February, March, May, and June for that to commence, so we're probably going to be over the one sixty-five, which is a good one. I'll give you up. Enterprise, water hookup fees have collected three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, which we budgeted seventy-seven thousand five hundred. Sewer hookup fees collected have been three hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-six, and we budgeted sixty-three thousand. So I will have final figures for you all on all of the emergency repairs that have happened um on the water sewer side at the March meeting.
I do have one question, if I may. Um of the salt that we purchased, you said about seven thousand dollars, is is that, do we purchase as we need it and use it, or is that, do we store any of it?
Do we store any salt? We store, we store a certain amount, yes, but we're limited in what we can, what we can store.
Sure.
That's why we're looking at a new salt barn.
Okay, but the point I was making there was, I think, unmute?
Yeah, it's not working again.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
Okay, so the question was, um so we purchased about seven thousand dollars so far, and our budget's around eight, um so we're up against it, but I was just wondering if that amount that we have spent kinda means that that's what we've used, or we we've spent seven thousand, we've used about six or or five or six?
Uh I'm not sure what we have in backlog, I would imagine we still have some left of what we purchased to use, but I don't know the the tonnage of that.
Wayne, Wayne's speaking, go ahead Wayne.
Far, so the rest of the salt is a reserve, we probably have about forty tons or so in the salt barn, and that's that's at max capacity.
Okay. So 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 if we, if we're, we keep our fingers crossed, we might not go over the budget.
Correct, the 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 issue is uh when you have larger snowstorms, you use less salt.
Right.
Or uh easy plowing, uh with these kinda storms that we've had lately, and several storms kinda back to back, that uh it makes it difficult, and then you use more salt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I I just feel like I need to make a comment for folks who are out listening in Zoom and and don't perhaps always attend it, when you hear these numbers from Donna about us being way over in in budgeting, we have literally millions of dollars in water projects that the town has to complete, so. Just so everybody knows, this isn't like some kind of surplus, that this, it's it's money that's gonna get spent because we we have so many projects, so I just wanna make sure I say that, cuz it just sounds like, oh, we have all this money. We have all these things we have to do, you know?
Thank you. Moving on to water and sewer bill clerk, filling up water exactly. It's, filling it up.
Everybody hear me? Okay, good, all right, um you don't have too much to report, um water bills were sent out on January tenth. Uh the due dates for those bills is February tenth, um however, if you pay monthly, it's due the twentieth of every month. Um if you haven't received your quarterly bill, please contact me. Just email me or call me, and I can mail or email you a copy. Um late charges are gonna be assessed on February eleventh. That's it, any questions?
Thank you, any questions? We're moving on to enforcement officer Nicole Felder. All right, Miss Felder, you're up. Miss Felder, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes, she goes.
There you go.
Okay, hello everyone, good evening. And I put them off of January, we had five new cases, and um of those, this they were actually second warnings for cases that we had for the prime months, we were giving out second notifications. So none of those calls were actually made. Of those, there were three for junk nuisance calls, complaints, and then for two for unlicensed or applicable vehicles. There were eight site inspections done, um myself, Director Di, I mean, um Mayor, the Town Manager Di, and Michelle, we were able to meet and we were able to finalize the next portion of the uh the enforcement for citations, and today, we actually sent out our first citation, and moving forward, we'll be limiting the number of warnings, to one warning as opposed to we were giving out two and three warnings. We'll be giving out just the initial warning, waiting the time period and moving forward with the citation period. And that was basically all I had, if anyone had any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions? Moving forward, does anyone have a lehigh ID? Okay, moving on to new business, turn it over to Town Manager Di.
Okay, the first thing under new business is. That good? First thing under new business is a resolution. Uh the mayor has the the resolution on his desk there, it's basically to authorize the Town Manager to apply for Department of Agricultural, Department of Agricultural Rural Utility Services loan uh for the Maryland thirty-one Water Main Improvement Project. This is a requirement uh for the USDA application, so um it's more of a a basically a formality, but we need to take a vote on that and and approve that that uh resolution, and Mayor has the has the form there for.
Give him a second till.
You wanna look at it or what?
No. Read it as I walk.
Read it as I walk. I believe it is in your folders as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
I've seen it. Thank you.
So, you need a motion?
Yeah, we need a.
What's the language of the motion? To move forward with authorizing the Town Manager to apply for a Department of Agricultural Rural Utility Service loan for the Maryland Thirty-One Water Improvement Project?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
All right.
William?
All right.
I have it. I'll give you.
It seems like they fixed the microphone again, so we'll give it a try.
If you can go on mute again.
For now, anyways.
So, Mayor, you can finish that, that resolution, the dates and everything there, and I can get that from you.
Yep, just fully.
Okay, so now, uh, next thing under new business is the general budget discussion. I'm going to read down through some information, and then you all also have, I put copies of, of the, the budget to where, where we are to date in your folders. Um, we can, we can go down through that a little bit, and if anybody has any questions, I'm just going to give an overview of kind of where we are and, and sort of the process that we go through. Um, so we've got a good start on the FY twenty-three budget so far. I've met with Donna on January twentieth and Wayne on January twenty-first for the first of several meetings. We meet again tomorrow and Friday this week. Uh, the proposed employee pay rates, healthcare, and retirement costs have been calculated as a first draft. Um, a fourth public works position is being proposed. At this point, the title is utility and public works maintenance, and will be geared towards assisting Director Myers. Um, the position, again, at this time, is planned to be funded from fifty percent enterprise fund and fifty percent general fund. Uh, we would be looking for someone with experience in water sewer, as well as public works. And the, um, uh, public works, uh, schedule as usual is always very busy, especially on the water sewer maintenance side. Uh, there's no doubt in my mind or Director Myers' mind that this position is needed, and there's plenty of work for, for the position. Uh, we feel confident at this point early on, the budget can support the new position, but until the budget is further along and closer to completion, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll know for sure later, later on in, in the budget process. Um, any questions there before I move on from that, I'm moving just down the line here a little bit? Uh, last budget season, I created a water sewer revenue calculator spreadsheet. Uh, this has been completed for this year, and it calculates water and sewer usage revenues based on base rate, usage rate, current and new EDUs. The water and sewer hookup fees and bay restoration fees are also calculated. It's, it's really nice now. You just basically plug and play with the new rates, user rates, number of EDUs, and it, and proposed EDUs, and it calculates everything out for you. Um, so that's already been done. Uh, last year, conservative number of EDUs, uh, of eight EDUs was used. This year, we're using twelve EDUs, which is per the Snaider Summit Public Works Agreement. Uh, the twelve EDUs, we believe, is still conservative based on, uh, Snaider Summit production. As mentioned earlier, forty-five, uh, EDUs in FY twenty-two so far. A reminder, I've said this several times, hookup fees are finite. When Snaider Summit is built out, that revenue source will stop. So, we'll take the revenue while we can. Donna mentioned that we're way ahead on that, and Kim mentioned that, that is going to be, we have plenty of projects to use that for, but those are one-and-done type fees. And when new homes stop, that revenue source stops. Um, so, but we'll take it, we'll take it while we can, for sure. Um, Donna, last start at the top of the budget basically was you're looking, uh, general fund, uh, revenues are a top, and then expenditures, and then enterprise fund, uh, revenues, and then expenditures on down. We started at the top with the proposed general fund revenues, and all but a couple of those line items are complete. Uh, one big revenue generator we're waiting on is real property, uh, which we get in a constant yield tax rate certification, typically in mid-February. Uh, each municipality in the county is reassessed every three years, and this is a reassessment year for New Windsor. Uh, so we anticipate, we expect real property revenue to increase from the projection that we'll get in our constant yield rate certification. Um, the follow-up column in the spreadsheet, uh, shows the increase or decrease from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. It, one notable decrease in revenue is the cell tower line item. Um, you may or may not know that T-Mobile and Sprint merged, and Sprint is now part of T-Mobile. And Sprint is exercising its right to not renew the agreement with the town effective March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The yearly revenue from Sprint is thirty thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. It will continue until Sprint removes their equipment from the tower. They all removed their equipment from the tower. We don't know exactly when that'll be, but the revenue will continue until that point. After that, the revenue will stop. We can try to negotiate, we will try to renegotiate with T-Mobile, uh, that, that T-Mobile agreement when it's up for renewal to recoup some, or if not all, of the lost revenue from Sprint. So, that's, that's a, a loss in revenue, uh, projected for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, Wayne and I focus on, uh, the public works in general fund, and then water and sewer expenditures in the enterprise fund. During our first meeting, we got through most of the public works, uh, line items in the general fund. Uh, one noteworthy line item is the increase in trash household, household and recycling collection. The increase of twenty-three thousand is based on second year of the contract with Hughes and projected tonnage for trash and recycling. So, I keep a spreadsheet every month of what we get, build for, amount of tons for trash and for recycling. And so, I basically keep a running average, and at this point, I just start projecting what is going to be the yearly average, and I use that as, as, as the, the budget number. Um, I did reach out to the Bureau Chief of Solid Waste for Carroll County to ask about any increases in tipping fees and, uh, for trash and recycling. And at this point, none are proposed, uh, but he said, however, it's always, it's always a possibility. But at this point, they're not anticipating an increase there, so that, that's good. Um, Wayne and I also work closely together on the general fund and enterprise fund six-year capital list, which includes capital projects and equipment on the general side and capital projects on the enterprise side. I've, uh, updated the general fund list. I'll be starting the enterprise fund list next, and we'll be going over with Wayne in future meetings. I made a copy of, uh, the, uh, general fund, uh, list, uh, in your, in your, um, folders. I'm going to take a look at that. I've looked, I looked at a lot of the records. There was, there was, uh, an AMAC study done back in four, two thousand and fourteen and fifteen that looked at the majority of the Old Town roads, not all of them. They did core samples, and they basically gave it a, a paving condition index, a PCI number. The higher, the lower that number was, the worse condition the road was in. So, we kind of targeted the worst, um, uh, conditioned roads that we had numbers for, targeted some of those last November, and the remainder of those, we're going to look at in upcoming year, hopefully this year. But also just went and, and did all the other roads in Old Town and got rough linear footage and used an increase value of the price per foot that we got from CPE when they did paving for us in the spring. There's definitely an increase in cost because everything's going up, but I basically, they were, they were averaging about, I think, thirty-five dollars a linear foot last year, so I used forty-five dollars a linear foot just to get some numbers in. So, all the roads have numbers to them, and, um, you can take a look at that, that spreadsheet. And if you have any questions, you can let me know. Um, there are a few line items throughout the budget that are, that we know already and are, are standard that aren't increasing. Um, and they have been input in, in the budget as you go down through. Um, I've, again, reached out to several other vendors that we have contracts with to see if rates or cost are going up, and those, those budget line items will be updated accordingly when responses come back. The MES budget has been requested, and, uh, the MES has its own water and sewer section at the, in the budget at the very bottom of the, of the budget. It's broken up into water and sewer that they, they submit a budget every year. So, that's the, just the overview. Um, if you, we can look at, look at the spreadsheet, and if anybody has any questions or anything, we can talk about what we've done so far. Like I said, we're, we're on a schedule, uh, both for meetings and then for staff, uh, meetings to get through, systematically through the different sections. Um, you know, we'll be updating and putting in actuals and, and year-to-date totals. Actuals for twenty-one, year-to-date totals for where we are for twenty-two as we work through, uh, our meetings and stuff. So, what Donna and I's meetings. So, anybody have any questions, want to discuss anything?
Gary, is there any opportu, don't need it. Is there any opportunity to be proactive in, with the cell tower, reaching out to other service providers? Uh, since we'll have room on there, since they're taking equipment away to, to use that tower? I wasn't sure how that worked with the service providers, but the fact that we will have some room there, is, is there some place that we can advertise to service providers that we have space on a cell, on a?
We, we have contracts with all the, pretty much all the major ones already.
Okay.
There's other, there's other, the other, I guess there's maybe what, four or five major ones out there. They all have equipment on, on, on the tower now and provide us revenues. Is that right?
Okay.
So, I mean, unless there's a new upstart cell company out there that I'm.
They all run off of the other ones as well.
Yeah.
But, um, is there any opportunity for, um, possibly broadband internet to get in there? Would that be a fee-based thing, or, because I know it's not cell, like?
Right. I, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that works. I know there was talk a, a while back with, on the county level of bringing broadband to, uh, to different parts of, of Carroll County. Um, I'm not sure where that, where that is. Um, that was, at the time, was being discussed by, um, direct, I think Director of IT is, um, Mark Ripley, as it came. So, I can reach out to, to him just, just to ask the question.
Because I know there's a few broadband companies that service this area. I'm not sure if they'd be interested in being on that cell tower. Or if that's even feasible.
Right.
Um, it looks like Director Myers is talking.
I just have, um, so that, that is a possibility. Um, I know our control company at one point in time wanted to rent a space off the town, uh, at the Old Town Hall Building to, to beam a signal from, uh, Town Hall for, uh, fiber, the fiber internet. Um, so potentially, we could reach out to Comcast, and they could put a, put a antenna on top of the tower. Uh, there just was never any space there, uh, for them to be allowed to do that. And now with, uh, the Sprint removing their equipment, then that's a possibility. Uh, so I, I have a contact with them. I can reach out to them and, and, and check on that.
Awesome. Anything else?
I have one other thing. Um, Town Manager Di, I, I don't know if, um, you, you have talked to Deputy Calusi yet, or if you, you plan to in the, in the process, but I wonder if there is, um, a need or would be good to purchase another one of the, um, speed signs that he moves around town? Um, I know they were several thousand dollars when we purchased that last one, and, you know, batteries and such, but, um, that may be something, um, want to consider. He, he often puts it, uh, in places in front of my house where I can see, see it, and, um, it does, it does work. Um, people do come through, and when those reden, they do hit their brakes. So, it does slow the traffic down. Not that any, I, I've seen excessive speeding on it, but it does have an impact. Um, so, um, maybe if, if, if the deputy thought that it was worth purchasing another, that we may want to consider putting one of those in, into the budget.
Okay, there are, you have your cost for the sign, and like you say, the batteries, and then we have a yearly, uh, licensing for registration, uh, cost, I believe, I have to check. I think it's like fifteen hundred, if I recall. But I don't know what the cost of the original sign was. That was, it's been here since I've got here, but I'll, I'll check with him.
Yeah, if I recall, it was somewhere in the three to five thousand dollar range when we purchased that.
Deputy Calusi looked like he was trying to speak as well.
Yes, sir. It's about three thousand with the fifteen hundred dollars per cent fee per year. So, so three thousand for this startup. Um, I would recommend it just because with one sign, you're not getting this other sign. So, if you're, they're going eastbound, you're going to have it on the westbound stand. You don't have it. So, it's really kind of, doesn't give you full justice just having one sign, so.
I think there's always a line item in the budget for, uh, the deputy, I think it's five thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Is that it? Is that what you did?
I, I think, I, I think that is, yes.
Hold on one second. I'll tell you.
And, and he hardly ever uses it, so.
That would be a good thing to use it, huh?
Okay. I will follow up with him and, and work on that.
Even if we just increase it a little bit.
Yeah. We should be able to cover the cost of the sign and then the yearly. Is, is the, because the yearly registration's under a different line item, correct? But that, that's.
I can't.
Yeah, I think it, I'm pretty sure it is.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, too. Um, yeah, I'm just not sure, you know, what it was under as far as buying the reeds and stuff last year, so I wasn't sure where I was looking to see.
It is under, yeah, under Parks and Recs Equipment Repair slash Seasonal.
So, how much do we have allotted for that for, for twenty-twenty-two?
It's right there, twenty thousand.
Oh, twenty thousand. Oh, twenty thousand again. So, is that would include if we did get something like that, if we got the hometown here?
Twenty thousand is what's budgeted for twenty-two. This budget we're working on is twenty-three. We haven't put in.
Oh, oh, okay. So, is that something that would be accounted for in the twenty-twenty-three budget, or?
Well, it, it, that line item will remain in twenty-three's budget, and then we have to determine how much money we want to put in for twenty-three.
Okay.
So, that, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that, that line item yet.
Okay, I see.
But it'll, it's a line, the line item will continue with an amount in it for twenty-three, yes.
Okay.
We just haven't determined that, that.
All right, I guess, I guess that's what my question was, yes. Thank you.
I do have a question. Um, back to the, uh, the speed signs. Were there provisions in the, um, ARCA money that we received, um, that would, would accommodate the purchase of those?
It, it would be hard.
Uh, I think that's a stretch for the ARCA money.
Okay.
It was kind of water sewer broadband.
Broadband.
It, it's also for widening up, so like if you did like a park, um, that brings in people to your town, but that'd be a stretch for that.
I thought there was, was a provision for safety, but maybe I'm wrong.
The final rule came out naturally, right, for that?
Yeah.
No, it's been out.
It's, yeah, the final rule's out, yeah. Um, I, I, I have it.
That's not an expense. I don't think so.
I don't believe it. It is. I, that, that final rule's out. It's a lengthy document.
Okay. So, what's we're thinking on my part?
Well, I mean, you're, you're more than welcome to tear it up. But I don't recall that being in there. Now, the, 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 you know, the, the use of the, that for the, the office stuff that, that Richard Turner's working on, I think, is, is a dual of expense within the ARCA money. So, I know he sent out, you know, Will, new stuff just, just today, I believe. I was caught on, so. You guys might be talking about that, too.
Yeah, we have that covered. I'm just thinking, public safety in some way.
Any other general fund discussion questions, Town Manager?
I have just a comment from me.
Okay.
For reasons that become obvious, I generally do not sit through all of the budget hearings. It's not a prudent use of your very carefully tended resources. So, if I'm not here, or if I get up at the middle of an agenda and walk out, it's nothing personal. It's just traditionally, it doesn't make sense for you guys to pay me to sit through that because I'm not a player at all. So, I'll just say no.
I, I will take a sentence.
Okay.
Take a sentence.
Is there any other new business?
Um, I have one thing to add, just that while we're on the budget, um, I did send out an email, um, to all you that, about if you want to meet with me individually, let me know. Um, I'll try to schedule it the best I can. I mean, obviously we're busy as can be this time of year, but I'm open to that, whether it's a specific, if you want to go through the whole budget, it's going to take a little while, but if, if I'm willing to do that or, or look at certain questions or areas or sections of the budget, just, just let me know. It, it's, you know, like you said, we'll put, I'll continue to put these new, um, uh, files out there as we, you know, get further and further along in, in the budget, um, as we move forward. Um, the only other thing I did want to mention, um, is in my, in my notes I forgot to mention was, uh, wanted to put out a reminder that the Carroll County Library Headquarters parking lot at one thousand Green Valley Road is, is no longer, has not been. And it's, it's, um, not for town residents parking during snow emergencies. I got a call from, uh, Director Brown over there and he, he's kind of new to that position and didn't know that we had stopped using that, but he did notice some residents parking over there during one of these storms. So, I said, no, that's been taken off at, at the county's request a while ago. But I said I'd put a reminder out in the newsletter and-
Do you do Facebook thing or maybe in?
Yeah, no, it's on, it's, it's in the newsletter and it's on, Kalina put it on the, uh, the, 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 um, website and everything on there. So, I just wanted to remind everybody and, um, you know, uh, on the meeting here. It is on the website under Government. In the Government tab, Town Services, there's a list of, of, uh, off-street parking for, during snow, snow emergencies.
And while you're doing that reminder, because we have a lot of new folks living in town, that there was some confusion about where people can park and the snow emergency plan covers every road in town. So, if we, if the, if the county declares a snow emergency, you have to get your car up the town roads, period. There's no exceptions to that. And just on a related note, the, the town code also requires that we clear our sidewalks within a certain period of time. I can't remember what it is.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. So, if you have a sidewalk in front of your house or behind your house, depending on where your house sits on the street, you're responsibility to go out and clear it if it snows within twenty-four hours.
And that is under the purview of the code enforcement officer to be checking on that stuff. So.
We're all hoping it's not going to snow again, but-
It wouldn't hurt my feelings, but-
Yeah, me either.
It's only February second.
Any other new business then? Moving forward with old business, with your executive committee members?
Yep.
Welcome aboard again.
Um, then it's back to me, I guess?
Yes, sir.
I don't get much reprieve here. Um, the only other thing about old business is, um, the COVID nineteen, public meeting status and approval of administrative leave. It's kind of a two-fold thing here. Back on January fourth, uh, uh, twenty twenty-two, Governor Hogan declared a thirty-day state of emergency to take urgent short-term actions to combat Co- COVID nineteen surge. Uh, state and Carroll County government required mask in all ver- virtual meetings for January. I have not heard of any change from the governor's office. Um, has anyone else heard anything? Kim, have you heard anything on the state level?
Um, you know, he's doing his State of the State this evening while we're meeting. So, we're missing it. I'm hoping that I can watch it on YouTube later, but he has not held a press conference in more than a week. So, he sent out, um, I just was looking at the website while we were, cause I saw that on the agenda. The, the positivity rate was down a little bit below ten percent as of last week and, um, the hospitalizations are declining. As far as I know, the, the state of emergency is set to expire this week. So, if we don't hear anything between something renewing it, then we can assume it's going to expire.
Okay.
So, and I'll pay attention-
Okay.
And let you know if I hear anything different.
The reason I'm asking is we need, we obviously ha- kept this meeting, the first, Feb- first of February, first meeting in February here, um, closed to the public. So, we're looking ahead to the, to the, the council meeting on the, it's a Tuesday again, the nineteenth, twentieth. Yeah. Um, what we want to do there. So, um-
Why don't we say if the state of emergency is lifted, then we'll lift the restrictions on this meeting and if it's not, we'll keep them in place.
Is that all right with you all?
I would follow whatever the state-
Yeah, just we'll follow the state guidance.
All right. Very good. Um, and then, um, um, at the January fifth council meeting, I asked council for feedback on allowing administrative leave for staff who are required to quarantine due to COVID or do, or to take care of a family member with COVID. I reached out to the seven or municipalities in Carroll County and all provide some type of administrative leave with most of them allowing, uh, up to ten days. Um, so I would request if we're going to okay this, which I'm looking for direction to do so, that we make this retroactive back to November, uh, first of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we did have a, a staff member out for an extended period of time due to COVID. Um, mayor and council's thoughts on this?
I mean, if you're, if you're vaccinated, what's a quarantine like the time, five, five days now if you're, if you're fully vaccinated?
I think it depends on whether you're symptomatic.
Yes.
Right.
I think they're saying if you're asymptomatic, five. But if you're symptomatic, still ten, I think.
Yeah. That's what this, I know for the state, that's what it does.
So, that's going to be another, uh, state guideline issue.
Well, I mean, we, I, you know, we, I'm just asking for some direction if, if you all want to entertain, uh, allowing a certain amount of days of, of, I'll call it administrative leave, where the employee doesn't have to use their own personal leave time if they themselves had COVID or they're home taking care of a child or, or a parent or, or whatever.
So, I know at the federal level that, just speaking from experience, um, eh, as long as you are asymptomatic, there is no quarantine. Um, my concern that I have is, um, we're already short-staffed, um, and, and by having extended outages, that we could really put a hurt on, on the ta- town staff. Um, I don't, I don't know how much of a need there is for, um, these outages. So, say like, say if somebody's relative is sick, you know, a, a, a spouse or, or a son or whatever. Um, if that, if that staff person's out, what burden what, does it put on the rest of the staff? Even if they don't have, like, say they don't have COVID, they're asymptomatic and currently we're wearing masks.
I mean, when, when my, my, my general direction has been that if you're, you know, if, eh, and we've been, eh, we've been fortunate that we haven't been hit more. We, like you said, there's not many staff, but if, if, in the one case that we did have, the, the, you know, the employee tested positive and, and, and eh, I, I didn't want them to work exposing the, the few other of us that are here. I mean, that, that's a double-edged sword. Yes, you're down, you're down a, a person, but if you allow the person to come to work, whether they're masked or not, and then the rest of Public Works gets it or the rest of the staff get it, I mean, it can wipe us out very quickly. That's, you know, that's, that was my concern. So, I, I, I didn't want the, eh, the staff person working until they were cleared and, and went through the, the, the protocols of, of quarantine.
And there's no other alternatives that they can do, like say, if, you know, somebody could work from home or possibly, you know, I know we have Public Works, if they could, uh, work at it like a, there's down at the sewer plant, if, if somebody could be quarantined over there, if they're still able to work, is that an option or is it really something that, um, like you need your staff i- in this town hall?
Uh, there, there's some, there's some options for, you know, like myself, uh, to work harder the time from home, but, I mean, a day or two is one thing for, for the office staff, but I, I don't see that really being a, a, a feasible option for, for Public Works. I mean, uh, Wayne wants to chime in on that. He's, if he's still out there. Yeah. Um, I don't see that it really is an option.
So, for like me, I could potentially work from home for a couple of days, but you would almost have to be prepared or something like that. But like the other, the other guys, they wouldn't be able to do that. And then as separate staff, you still have to arrange some kind of, of transport for staff too. And so, you wouldn't want to share vehicles. Um, you have, you have NES at various locations, water stations, pumping stations, the wastewater plant. At some point in time, uh, you know, staff would come in contact with, with other people unless they were kind of secluded down their, their lane. But, um, with our meeting shop being up at the, at the new town hall building, it, it makes it, it makes it really tough, um, to, to do productive work when you're separated. Um, cause basically you would be giving another person that would be on quarantine, busy work. And busy work at times, it's really just busy work. It's not productive at all.
So, Gary, did you see anything or any particular policy that, you said you found stuff from other towns? Did you see something that you liked, that you think would work, that you could help, tell us about?
I was going to be asking if they, if they, uh, if the other municipalities allowed, uh, for administrative leave. Um, so, um, I did, I did, eh, didn't ask for it, but a couple of them did send some, some guidance that they had, but it, it varied. You know, I mean, you look at Westminster, that's got, you know, a hundred employees and then, you know, I didn't even hear anything, you know, like say from Union Bridge or anything. But I think it varied, uh, throughout. Um, I mean, I can take a closer look at that. Um, but I was primarily asking the other municipalities if, if they, if they did allow any kind of administrative leave, just to see where, where they were on that.
In lieu of requiring your sick employee, your quarantined employees to use their own time exclusively, to use their, their regular off-time, they'd essentially get some more, for want of a better term, freebie off-time as because they needed it for the COVID as opposed to they needed it to go to Ocean City.
Well, and with the whole thing with having to quarantine because somebody else is sick, it doesn't really fit your sick leave.
Yeah, it's weird.
You know, I mean, I, I said some of the, the stuff that the state requires and it's quite onerous at the state level to get what they call COVID leave. You have to prove that you, you have to have a positive test, which you have to send to them from the provider. You have to prove that you're vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated, you can't take any COVID leave. And you have to get it approved, which is kind of like, makes no sense. You have to get it approved before you need it. So, it's almost like if you think you might catch COVID, you should ask for this pot of leave so that you can take it if you need it, you know, which that doesn't make any sense. But it's not, eh, 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 it's, 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 it's because people do get sick leave. They want, you know, they want to make sure you're using it for COVID.
Yeah.
You know, so, and you only can take, I think, ten days at the most and it depends on whether you're symptomatic and all that kind of. I mean, I don't have an objection to the, the, the concept, you know, I think we have to kind of limit it, you know, to maybe five days or something like that, you know?
Yeah, we, we talked about it internally at a staff meeting, you know, basically trying to develop our, our own COVID policy. And it was, it was, there was a lot of concerns. It's not, it's not a, a cross-the-board decision that you can just say, okay, this is how everybody's going to do it, you know? I mean, every case is different. Every municipality is different. And, and we found just discussing it internally that it was just that. It was difficult to come up with an SOP for how to proceed exactly. You know, because we're so small and so integrated individually with, with the staff and stuff. I mean, it, it's not an easy decision. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there and it's-
And, and employers are, are really struggling with it because, and it, the real problem comes in when you're not sick. Because if you have the quarantining, but you're not sick, you can't take sick leave because you're not sick. You know, you're quarantining because somebody else is possibly exposed to. So, like at, like at a government level, that's not something that, you have to take vacation time or personal time or leave without pay or whatever, you know? So, that's really get, it is, it is complicated. I mean, I, maybe, may, if you, if you came up with anything, maybe you could just get, write it up and send it to us to look at. I mean, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not opposed to possibly having it, you know? I mean, what do y'all, what do the rest of you think?
If, if I can interject here a minute, I think I might be able to clear this enough. Our main concern, we're paying the employee any of it.
No, one way or another.
Okay. So, what we're asking, instead of them having to use all their sick time, we want to pay it as administrative leave. It's still, it's still the same salary. We're not giving them any more. That, that's all we're asking, is that if we can allow them to keep their time.
Right.
So, that's all we want you all to make a decision on.
And, but how, and do you, and you have a, a number of days in mind for it?
Well, that is, that's the body. It's your decision.
And that's, that's what I guess I would like.
We just, if, if a person has to quarantine for ten days and they're only get fifteen days leave, they, they pretty much shot it for the year. But that, that's, so that's all we're asking is please consider, if, we're not going over their annual salary or anything. We're just asking you all to give them a special circumstances for administrative leave for that COVID if they've been in that situation and can put, and they do usually provide us proof.
So, Donna, the, the, I, I don't recall how much sick leave our employees earn. How much sick leave do they earn a year?
It depends on your num- years of service.
On your tenure.
On your tenure. So, that you get vacation days and you get sick leave days?
All together.
So, all just lumped together.
PTO.
And they don't care whatever you have to-
They can care in three days.
Three days.
Which we really don't enforce. I'm not taking anybody's time away. I can pay that right now. Ain't happening.
So, so I believe without having the handbook in front of me, I believe it's one to five years is fifteen days. And then six to ten is, I'm, I don't know. It's a lot of-
It's on a sliding scale.
So, yes.
Sliding up.
Sliding up, yeah.
So, but you know, in a case like, um, with Joshua, who, who started in November, he doesn't have it yet.
Right.
So, he specifically would be affected, um, by not having it week time. So, I hope that clears it up just, just a little bit.
But how, how does the administrative leave get funded if, if, like you said, it doesn't increase their salary, it doesn't increase their, um-
It's just a line item under their pay.
That would still be in addition to their already, uh, you know, say, say it's fifteen days. So, the fifteen days plus the ten days, if, if that's the, the, the plan, that would still be an additional-
It's not additional.
So, it's, it's just more days not in the office. That's all it is.
But that's still, you know, that's less working hours, I should say.
Which is why we tie it with a different thing. Still coming out, it's still coming out that annual, I mean, for that.
Well, and like Gary said, we don't want people coming in here sick and making everybody else here sick. You know, that's, that's dangerous. You know, to say, well, you can't take any leave. So.
That's also the federal guidance.
But, but, but let me, are we, we're paying them anyway, right?
Yeah.
So.
If they, if they have leave, we're paying them.
Okay.
If they have their own lea- if they have leave time to use, we're paying them to leave time. Unless they take it without pay, if they don't have it, that'd be, we wouldn't be paying them.
So, is this administrative leave just for people who don't have enough other leave?
No.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm being obtuse. I understand that. I have ten days allotted to me for the course of the year. And I get the, I get the COVID or a child gets the COVID and I have to stay home. If I have to stay home for five days and I get paid five days administrative leave for that, how much PTO do I have? Do I still have ten?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Well, then I've effectively gotten five days off with pay that I didn't have before.
Yes.
Now, I understand that the hard number dollars haven't necessarily gone up, but there are two different, two different things. So, if, if my child is, is terribly sick and I'm running upstairs all day, that's one thing. If my child has a sniffer and we sit and watch, you know, the Tupper Toppies all day, what a nightmare. I'd rather come to work. Um, but, um, I am getting more time off than I would otherwise. So, I, I don't know if, I'm not, just not understanding how that isn't. I don't care. I don't even work it. But how about, is it more time? I just, I'm sorry. I don't get it. I just, I'm sorry, I don't get it. So you'll have to explain it to me later.
No.
I don't know why I can't.
Present to them in the future.
I'm sorry, you're.
Just work work what, you know, we would assume to to be feasible in the future. Can't just be like, ah, can we have ten days of administrative leave? And then I see there's there's viable, you know, viable points all throughout the room that makes sense. I I understand it's also an error on the side of 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 safety.
I'd like to interject if I could. I just feel like, um, you know, COVID is what we have right now. Who's to say what's coming down the pike? You know, these these viruses and things are getting harder, and this is something that the whole world is confronting right now, and so I think it is important that we set a policy for this because I think this is something that's gonna be an issue down the road as well, and you know, I mean, we just have to, you know, adjust our thinking to knowing that this is something that any one of us could uh be affected by at any time and could happen in the future with another illness, so I'm just, I feel like we do need to make a policy. I think it's important, and I think we need to be sympathetic to the fact that nobody has control over what's going on. And, you know, if you have to stay home because you've been exposed or or you're really sick or somebody in your family is really sick, you don't ask for that, you know, and you would have been at work otherwise. I I think we have to show a little bit of leniency there too and be sympathetic to what's going on. That's just the way I kind of look at things, so I feel like there should be a policy, and I feel like feel like we need to take it into consideration, what's what's happening, and it's not just here and everywhere, so, you know, the world is dealing with this. It's just a, it's just a new wave we're on.
Yeah, I I'll put something together. I mean, like I said, we 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 started off with a, I called it a an operating procedure. It didn't really account for administrative leave side of it, but we'll we'll, I'll try to put something together.
So Gary, one thing to con- consider is if if we we, if we decide we don't want to do a administrative-type leave, maybe we need to do something that allows our employees to borrow leave ahead. Um, advanced leave, right? Um, and of course, then there would be provisions in there that if they quit work and they had advanced leave, they would have to, you know, you could get to deal with all that as well, but that's another way to give them opportunities to take off if they needed to without just giving them more days off. Because there's a, there's a cost to the taxpayer to have more days off, not in the fact that the employee makes more money, but that the town is getting less work for the amount of money that we're paying the employee.
Even if it were a fifty-fifty split, it's still a pretty fair deal.
I'll check to see if there's any funding. Uh, at one point, there was some funding for employers. So in the meantime, I'll check to see if there's anything near that we could uh pull from.
It's a good idea, Tom.
Not the, not the money to borrow anymore.
You could.
At one time, you could, yeah.
There was, uh, I think our company does a thing where you have the uh option to do, use your vacation time for the hourly employees. Um, and that not not get paid at all, or do short-term disability. Nobody ever chooses that, but um some, I mean, that is an option. The short, the reason they don't, the short-term disability is um at a lesser rate of, you know, percentage of your salary, so.
Uh, Director Myers is talking real quick.
I believe I I checked in at a short-term disability uh scenario, and I believe because our staff is so small, I don't think we would qualify for any of those programs, nor do we have anything like that in place now. And it would probably be fairly expensive to set something like that up. The only, the only, the only worry that I have is, let's say, uh, Public Works employee A comes in and they unknowingly uh are positive for COVID and then Public Works employee B gets sick, um, uh, and, you know, it's too late. Well, they're basically being penalized, uh, and and they they contract COVID based on something that somebody else had, and it's kind of, I mean, I know it's one of those kind of things that sickness is sickness, but um, it makes it tough when you have limited leave time, and then you have to, then you have to use it uh for a situation um that that was kind of hard and um, you know, you weren't aware that was gonna happen. It was, it's just a a bad circumstance, I guess you could say.
There you go. Just that I hear, I understand what he's saying.
Anything else on this? He's gonna put something together for us.
I will try.
Thanks, sir.
Moving forward to residents' concerns, if you would like to speak on Zoom, please uh raise your, raise your hand.
Oh, hand goes here.
Uh, as representatives of fire company, I would like to thank the town, the mayor and the council for your continued participation with us, uh, balance all of me and and we've opted for this, your annual check. And so I just want to thank the town, the after fire company, and uh, the support, the community, the relationship.
You're welcome. You guys provide an outstanding service for for the town and the residents.
For future reference, that is line item.
Thank you.
I do have um one concern, uh Director Myers may know about this, so I'm gonna speak as vaguely as possible, but there is a res- there is a person that has an agreement with the town in reference to her lane being plowed or cleared. I'm assuming it it means of snow. Um, but she said she called, but she asked if I could, in her absence, make reference to it. Director Myers, do you, do you understand my vague language there?
I I do.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Do you have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Hold it, favor.
Hi, everybody.